Good evening.
I'm good. Let's step here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Commissioner Danny Pierce to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, face the flag.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the states, one nation on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. Very good. Keep coming back. Very good crowd here, as always. Our first item, number one, is our consent agenda. Item A, September 3, 2024 minutes. Item B, fiscal year '25 budget amendment, number five. Item C, surplus and sale weapon to Deputy Sheriff Matthew Little for $1. Item D, releases, adjustments, refunds, and tax collection report. Item E, bar prevention week proclamation 2024. Item F, airport safety maintenance agreement and resolution authorized and commitment and release of liability with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Item G, Franklin County involuntary commitment transportation agreement update. Is any questions or discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I mean, a motion made in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, coming up to item two, which is the most important agenda item on our meeting tonight. Item two is comments from the public. This is a time set aside by the Board of Commissioners to allow individuals five minutes to address the board on issues concerning the county. The first sign up I have here is Leslie Joyner. To the podium, please.
How y'all doing tonight?
Doing good. You?
Been better, been worse.
All right.
Well, it's the second time here for the same issue. Why I cannot get transported to Rex Hospital. I got heart doctor, heart surgeon.
Can everybody hear him?
Can y'all hear me?
Okay. Yeah, speak up just a little bit.
All right. Anyway, I've been trying to get carried out there. I've been out there for 21 years. Then the new director pops in out of Wake County, and he says Cindy Wright's got a letter in that packet that Mr. Speed handed out. If you read it in detail, that was at your request, Harry, to put that together. And it's together now. I'm here to find out what we gonna do about it and why something can't be done about it.
I mean, we're not here to do a, you know, a debate on this. Uh, I mean, we'll, I'll contact you and let you know on this, but as far as I know, we have a standard operating procedure with our EMS on where people are to be taken to. I can give you a call back on that and...
Yeah, how about doing that? You've given me three callbacks, and I've not heard a response from anybody except you. I've talked to Roxanne, and I intend to talk to, I talked to Mr. Speed, and I intend to talk to everybody with the exception and the, uh, my understanding that Kim Denton does not have a deciding vote on this bowl. Is that true?
Well, yeah, she works as our pleasure. She's the county manager. We're the county commissioner, and we do both.
I know y'all.
That's right. And have you got anything else to tell us, Mr. Joyner?
Same thing I told you the first time.
Okay.
I've been going there for 21 years with no problem, and I wanted to know why it all of a sudden becomes a problem. See y'all later.
All right. I'll be in touch, Mr. Joyner.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. All right. Our next sign up is Mr. Scott Strickland.
Commissioners, we've been here, same thing, 8435 Highway 56 East. We've been here on the same thing that he just talked about. Couple days ago, my neighbor's son come home, found his mother on the floor. They forgot her back, conscious, and she requested to go to a heart doctor at Raleigh Community. She ended up in Windale, a coast all the way over there and a coast all the way back to Raleigh Community. You know, we got to cut this out. We have staff here. We got seven folks in the office that are paramedics. If, if, I know we're short, and we got six to seven applications, and seven need to be filled. We need to fix the problem ASAP. These, these folks don't need to keep waiting, like Ms. Wilder got transported over here to the hospital, needed to go to her doctor in Raleigh. The hospital told her that she didn't need to be there. Nothing they can do for, nothing. And from talking to the hospital over there, they had been said this is correct. They shouldn't carry them there. I mean, you know, this is an ongoing problem, and people are dying left and right. Our time limits are out of, out of this world. I mean, 27 minutes to a heart attack. That, that's something else. And we need to fix these problems ASAP. You know, I'm gonna stand up for my community because 86-year-old people don't know how to fight, and they deserve the best care that they can get. They're paying for it, and they're having to pay a lot more for it being transported back and forth, back and forth. And that ain't right. If a car mode here, they got to pay for a transport, either go to Henderson or where up. And, you know, we need to get them to the right place, the right time. I understand if you're having a cardiac arrest and you need to go to the quickest facility, or if you got amputee, I understand all that. But if it's a run and it's the end of the shift, the paramedic actually told this right here to the people. It's out of our hands. Kim Denton wrote a letter and sent it to our director, telling them that we cannot transport anywhere because they need to get trucked back to the county. Well, I understand we need to get them back, but we need to get them to the right place, too. Whether it's your, your family, my family, or whoever, they need to go. But what's gonna happen is these elderly folks are gonna quit calling 911, and they're gonna try to do it on their own, and they're gonna die. But it's our job to educate the public to do the right thing, and that's what I tend to do. You know, many years ago, when I took EMS qualification, that's what I swore to do, and that's what I'm gonna continue to do. I might die at this podium, but at least they're gonna know I'm here. But I mean, we need to get it right. We got too many people, like I said, sitting in the office. We got more trucks on the road, more supervisors than we've ever had. Jeff Wright done it all by himself when he was here, and you know, it, you know, growth has changed, but it ain't changed that much. If you can't manage folks, I mean, we need to hire some people that can, because this is getting serious. It's getting real. The other night, they couldn't even get a truck to Lake Roy. They had called one out of Nash County because they were doing the blood draw. And that's another issue. That is not an EMS call. That's what we got the hospital for. Let the, the provider or something there draw the blood. What if that needle breaks off in the arm? Who's liable? The county, because they agreed to let them do it. And I called, I called up the UNC Chapel Hill to, to check on that, and so they, they told me that, yeah, they could be sued, you know, if that happened. So now you got to pay them for to go to court because they drew the blood. Did you draw this blood? So, I mean, this is uncalled for. We need to get this right, and that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Our next sign up is David Pios.
Hi.
Sorry. I stand corrected.
I've been called a lot of... Well, first I'd like to start off by saying good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Pios, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. First, I'd like to start off by saying that I wanted to acknowledge and thank the board for its approval of the $10 million match for the $42 million Public School Building Fund grant. This decision, I believe, is a monumental step towards ensuring that our schools can provide safe, modern learning environments for our children. Your commitment to education is commendable, and I'm here to offer additional ways we can approach the funding in a way that benefits the entire community. Now, let me, let me also start up by saying having an understanding of governance, ranging from my work on Capitol Hill, my work at the White House, as well as having been a Commissioner myself at one point in time. And I also have not had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Denton, so having that kind of political savvy, it's often incumbent upon me to add these disclaimers before I say anything more. Let me also begin to say that the approval of the $10 million grant puts us in a strong position to secure the $42 million grant, funding that will allow us to address overcrowding, update outdated facilities, and provide school safety. This investment is about much more than buildings. It's about giving our students and teachers the environment they need to succeed in providing a foundation for Franklin County's future growth and prosperity. I also understand that this challenge is now is to secure the $10 million in the most responsible and sustainable way possible. I believe we can pursue several alternative funding options that will alleviate the financial burden on the county while still allowing us to unlock this transformative grant. Now, while the $10 million match is a necessary step, it, it's, I understand that it's no small feat. I believe that we must be creative and proactive in finding funding solutions that avoid overburdening taxpayers or cutting critical services. Thankfully, we have a multitude of pathways available to us that could provide relief and make the most of this opportunity. Tonight, I'd like to highlight several options that I believe would complement the board's decision and help secure the necessary funds. I'll start out by proposing or suggesting bond issuance. Now, issuing bonds allow, would allow us to spread the financial burden over time, reducing immediate impact on the county's budget. With Franklin County's good credit standing, we could secure favorable interest, making this a very cost-effective way to raise the funds. Additionally, bond repayments are predictable, and they are, in fact, manageable over the long term, giving us flexibility in balancing other financial priorities. Now, the next two I'd like to share with you a little bit outside of the box, but I, I feel they're, they're worth mentioning. The next is the Tax Increment Financing, or TIF. Now, TIF offers a way to fund school improvements by capturing future increases in property tax revenue that would result from rising property values around the updated school facilities. This option lets us fund the match using the economic growth and development that the project itself will help create without raising taxes immediately. It's a forward-thinking, sustainable approach. I'm sorry?
We have a five-minute limit.
Okay.
Unless we...
Okay.
But you want to, the board to extend it. I'll second that. Any question, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. What's your record at that? We need to do a roll call here.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
No. I'm sorry. It, it fails.
Okay. All right. Well, forgive me. I come from the Baptist church, and we are known to be a little loquacious.
We got more meetings to come and public comment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And next speaker is Mr. Darrell Chalk. I'd just like to go ahead and remind everybody again to a five-minute limit.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Darrell Chalk, 203 Janus Avenue, Franklinton. I'm representing the 911 Advisory Board. I'm the chairman. Back on the 19th of August, you all agreed to, we still need some clarification, but agreed to move forward with funding for the Bund, the downtown Bund Tower at the Bund High School property. There were some issues with tower coverage at the New Hope site, which is at Bund Fire Station 2. That was on that same change order number two from Williams Communications. Would like clarification as to whether it actually passed and was signed off on or not, because the coverage requirement for the entire county is 20 dB in buildings, up to 20 dB loss. Also, one of your worst coverage areas you have in Franklin County is from Royal Intersection to the Wake County line. You have two, two towers that were affected by the FAA requirements for height, total mass height. The one in question at Bund Station 2 was proposed at 325 feet total mass height, and it is down to 294 feet total mass height. And there is an issue with a 14-foot section in there. I think it goes in 20-foot or 10-foot sections, so that's kind of questionable, but well, what the Advisory Board wanted to do is move forward with the funding for the project for the downtown Bund Tower to keep moving forward. As you all know, this equipment's been in Franklin County for the better part of a year, and it's setting in storage, it's costing us money. So we need to get this tower built and move forward with that piece of it. The coverage requirement is something we can look at down the road. Some folks have said that it's, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. The FAA is the, the party that determines the height for the towers within that area, obviously, but because of the flight paths and such with the airport. But you must understand that the company that bid at this project was one of the ones that chose the location. Therefore, if you're building towers and radio systems, you should know that if you're in a flight path, that you have possibility that you will have a problem with the tower height. Everybody agree with that? My point is, it may not seem like much 2 dB loss, but Bund, Youngsville Fire Department, Hopkins Fire Department, Franklin County Sheriff's Department and their mutual aid, Franklin County EMS and their mutual aid, all will operate in that area. And in some people's opinion, it may be that that area is not going to have a building with 20 dB loss in the next 10 years. Well, in Franklin County, it's growth today, you don't know in 10 minutes if it's going to be somebody proposing a 20 dB loss building there or not, much less 10 years from now. Four-lane highway, you've got water already there. It's, it's possibilities are endless. So why would we agree to lower standard for that area that's going to be one of the busiest areas in the county when we already know that it's going to grow and we know it's a problem area? And you're using 800 versus VHF, so you're gonna have to have more towers, you're gonna have to have better coverage, but you're putting yourself in a position where you're going to have to build a tower in just a few years out. That doesn't sound like a good business plan. So what I'm asking, and the board, the Advisory Board was asking, is can you move forward with the Bund funding and take this coverage requirement off the list until it can be evaluated and more tests done and a proposal to solve the problem if it's not going to meet the coverage requirement? Is that a reasonable request? All right. Well, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And our next sign up is Mr. Seth Champion.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna set a timer on my watch here, so I'm trying not to run over. In the last few months, agriculture in North Carolina has been increasingly in the news due to the severe drought we experienced this summer, which lasted about 40 days and the 40 subsequent days of extreme rain. These weather events harmed, harmed our farmers and the crops in a time when markets are increasingly volatile. In addition to this, this week is National Farm Safety and Health Week, so I wanted to take a couple minutes to discuss agriculture in the county and advocate for our dedicated farmers. According to the 2022 USDA Census of Agriculture, there were approximately 518 farms in Franklin County with about $69 million in market value of goods sold. Unfortunately, those farms incurred about $63 million in total farm expenses, which, after it's all said and done, resulted in an average of $2820 in net farm income per farm. It's very concerning considering less than 2% of the people in this country feed everyone else in it, along with many people across the world. Also, about 7% of farmers here in the county are considered young producers, which are 35 years old and younger, further showing how hard it is to get involved and start farming as a young person. Farming is a very capital-intensive enterprise that requires land, seed, livestock, fertilizer, pesticides, equipment, and many other inputs to be purchased and used before there is a thought of a return. As we saw with the drought, Mother Nature is uncontrollable and largely determines outcomes of, for profitability and yield. For example, the corn that's been harvested last week or was harvested last week looked great before the drought, but now is yielding considerably less than it was expected to. The farmers in our county work hard and dedicate significant money, time, and effort to provide high-quality food products to feed hungry people. Increased development of farmland here, high taxes, and dangerous traffic all make it harder on the farmers and their families to make ends meet. Agriculture is the largest industry in North Carolina, and as such, farmers in the county, farmers in this county especially, should be heard about their thoughts on the issues that affect them. Between 2017 and 2022, North Carolina lost approximately 302,386 acres of farmland, and we're seeing, and seeing how in 2022 to 2023, we were the third fastest-growing county in the state, that trend continues here. So to all of our Commissioners, I would ask that when decisions are being made, please look through the lens of our farmers when making those decisions that alter the landscape of the county. I know that I want to try to conserve our soil and water resources as much as possible for my kids and their kids. To all of our citizens, please support your local farmers if you can. Buy quality food products that are grown here in the county that support the family farms that grow them. I know from my own experience producing freezer beef that we appreciate people wanting the food products that we produce because we put so much time and effort into making a great product. Even if it may cost a little more than the grocery store sometimes, I promise it's worth it. It would bless the lives of our farmers to know that their neighbors appreciate their hard work and value what they're producing. Finally, I think I've got some time. Finally, with it being National Farm Safety and Health Week, I would just ask everyone to be safe while driving on the roads during harvest season. Please share the road with tractors, combines, and primers, and be patient with them. They can't go any faster, and passing them in a no-passing zone can be very dangerous for everyone involved. We would like to get everyone back home to their families, safe at night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our comments from the public. Moving on to item number three, public hearings. Item A, request for rezoning, 24-REZ-1. Scott Hammerbach, and planning director, will provide a presentation regarding at 24REZ01. Thank you, Mr. Hammerbach. You may proceed.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to present this before you this evening.
Yes, sir.
Staff has received a rezoning request. As noted, the subject parcel is, you can see there, is a 2.67 acre parcel outlined in the purple, I believe, in your presentation there. It's located off Rossi Jones Road within the Dun Township. From the aerials there on the top map, you can see a lot, land is predominantly undeveloped in this area, and we do have residential to the west. And then below, we do have the zoning map. As you can see, the surrounding properties and the current property is zoned R30, but you will see the brown dot there that's adjoining property just down the road off Rossi Jones that is his own neighborhood business. And here we can see the portion of the property for the potential rezoning or rezoning request before this evening. So as noted, Mr. Jason Patterson is requesting a rezone 2.679 acres off Rossi Jones Road from R30 to conditional use neighborhood business. As a reminder, a conditional use rezoning basically pairs down what uses could be considered in this particular application. So within allowable uses within neighborhood business, the following uses he's asking to be considered for this rezoning request, bed and breakfast, all other office uses, all other office uses would be like a doctor's office, accountant office, things along those lines. Self-service and outdoor storage, that would be like boat and RV storage, and then also a conference center retreat facility. Appken stated, he's noted increased demand for boat and RV storage, and his ultimate intended use at this point in time is an outdoor RV storage. And as I noted, there is one just down the road in this local area. The Conference of Land Use Plan has designated this property for rural uses, public water and sewer nod adjacent to the site. The Neighborhood Business District is established for low-impact commercial retail and service uses for rural crossroads and historical commercial areas of the county. And general activity is concentrated, not dispersely near thoroughfares or crossroads. And also, as previously noted, just down the road, there is another parcel that is own neighborhood business that is currently utilized in that facility for self-storage and outdoor storage. The planning board did review this recommendation, in addition to sending notices out to adjoining property owners, and it was unanimously recommended for approval to this board this evening. General statutes do require that we adopt a zoning consistency statement. We do have one prepared for you. I'd like to read into the record. The Conference of Land Use Plan indicates that this property is intended for rural uses. Rural uses are characterized by large lots, abundant open space, pastoral views, and a high degree of separation between buildings. Residential homes, including estate homes on large tracts and hobby farms, are scattered throughout the countryside and are integrated into the natural landscape. Public utilities are generally not available in this area. The Neighborhood Business District is established for low-impact commercial, near crossroads and others, as I paraphrased from earlier. The subject property and adjacent property are his own residential R30. To the uses being requested, bed and breakfast, and conference center retreat facility are already allowable uses within the R30 zoning district as a special use permit. A 20-foot perimeter landscape buffer strip is required whenever commercial and or non-residential use is established adjacent to a different zoning district and/or use. So this is own neighborhood business. They would be required to install a 20-foot natural buffer between those and the residentially zoned adjacent properties. The request is... The request is is or is not reasonable with existing land uses and is or is not within the public interest. Be happy to answer any questions you may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions, Mr. Hammerbach? All right. Do I hear a motion to go in the public hearing? And a motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're open now. Public hearing. Anybody for or against, please come to the podium and state your feelings. All right, go in once, go in twice. Everybody's come up. I make a motion, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're back in. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion. We approve the rezoning request.
And a motion made in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along.
That was part of my motion.
Yeah.
The motion was to approve the request.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, all right. Moving on to item B, the U D O text amendment twenty-four dash U D O dash zero one. Scott Hammerbach, and again, Planning Director, will provide a presentation on revisions to the Unified Development Ordinance to ensure compliance with changes to North Carolina general statutes, correct and clarify references, and to allow for additional flexibility, staff recommends amendments to the following.
This is part of our periodic review. Based on feedback, we've come forth with a series of recommendations for revisions to the U D O. Foremost would be just the clarification of the definition of county water and sewer versus private water. An example of that would be a community well, making sure those are clearly identified. When you have water and sewer, that does change some things in terms of allowable lot sizes and subsequent setbacks. I'd like to note that those revisions have been reviewed by the Mr. Jim Sheedy, our Public Utilities Attorney, in addition to the staff attorney and county attorney as well for consistency. So really, it's just a changing of titles. We did have over a hundred pages involved within this from the various articles affected by that, but that's really all where this amendment entails in terms of that regard. We also did put in or clarified, let's say, sidewalk requirement for major subdivisions with a community well. Currently, if a community is served by or development is served by county water, there is a sidewalk requirement. If it's served by county water and sewer, basically, the sidewalk requirement applies to both sides of the road. Just consistency, we're just clarifying this for community well subdivision that they install these if they have water, one sidewalk on one side of the road. The other major or amendment of note would be a landscape buffer requirement for major subdivisions. Basically, this is a reaction to a development that's occurred where we had an instance where a house was constructed less than what would be allowed with a typical front setback. Came in about eighteen feet from the right of way. Basically, this subdivision had a ten-foot landscape easement. By the time they put the house in on a corner lot like this, they were able to have six feet was the minimum side yard setback. So what we're trying to do here is make sure homes are consistent throughout. You know, if you have a regular home, typically, your setback's going to be thirty feet. So we want to ensure all new developments that that thirty foot is a tier two. There is some language within here that allows for a reduction from thirty feet to twenty feet. And this is something to provisions with their ordinance if they install a berm, where that can be reduced, a berm and additional landscaping. So that really covers that part. And then the rest were just grammatical and reference errors that were picked up, a lot of those by Mr. Sheedy, just capitalizing Franklin from a lowercase F to a capital F. Be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these proposed text amendments or go a little further. And this was recommended by our planning board unanimously for approval to this board by seven oh vote for the last meeting.
Any board member have a question for Mr. Hammerbach?
I just want to clarify.
Sure.
Mr. Hammerbach, on the sidewalk requirement for major subdivisions, any well, so currently before this revision, was unclear that it was required to be on both sides?
There was some ambiguity. Yes, sir. There was.
So we're basically paralleling this for a community well or whether it's county water sewer?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other question?
Can you can you go over that one more time? Are we, a community well can serve how many houses?
Sixteen or more.
Sixteen or more?
Yes, sir.
So up to a thousand?
Theoretically, yes, but they'd have to have, those are permitted through Division of Water Resources, part of DEQ. So they have to have, typically, they have multiple well sites, they do well drillings and they look at the yield on these. And then they also have to have a third-party entity that operates that system, does monitoring on it, make sure it's running correctly, and also providing, having water samples tested.
And we're going to require a sidewalk curb and gutter, I'm assuming?
I wouldn't say necessarily curb and gutter on this.
A paved sidewalk or sidewalk piece?
It would be a sidewalk, which typically is a five-foot concrete strip located just outside of the right of way.
I had one question, going back to that, the water, since we, our water sewer infrastructure in the county is somewhat limited, are we still other people that don't have access to public water, still going to be able to develop, have subdivisions and ways to do that?
Right now, I mean, as I'm saying, the board has approved, they did relinquish the mandatory connection policy. So right now, I mean, you don't have to connect to county water. If you want to do a well and septic, you can certainly do that. You want to do a community well, you have that option.
So they could still have other avenues.
If you wanted to see county water, that's your third option.
Okay.
None of those have been removed from this.
All right, thank you.
All those options are still available for the development community and private homeowners.
Any other commissioners have any question? All right, I'd like to see if I entertain a motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
And a motion made?
So moved.
And a second. Any question on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now open for a public hearing on this subject. Anybody for or against or with questions, anything, please come to the podium and all right, go in once, go in twice. I guess that's it. We entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Sounds like I got a motion and a second on that one.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're back here, and now the question hand is the issue about the U D O text amendment twenty-four dash U D O dash oh one. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the action as requested.
Second.
And a motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hammerbach.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. Agenda item number four, action items. Our first one is item A, Carts Update. Mr. Randy Cantor, Executive Director of the Kerr Area Transportation Authority, otherwise known as Carts, will provide the update to the board. Welcome.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. Same to you, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you. If I can get this to open. Are you doing that over there? Oh, okay. Okay. All right. My name is Randy Cantor. I have been with Carts one year in July and thought it was time for an update for all you good people. So I have been meeting with each county commissioner group in each county to let you know how Carts is doing. This is your dear night. Ms. Denton, thank you again for meeting with us. She's been very helpful. All right. First and foremost, local county match. I just want to give you a little update on how Carts is funded. So we rely on several different entities to help us get through the year with finances, along with the four counties contributing to the local match. Our funding needs ensures that we can go the extra mile and afford our passengers' safe and reliable service. The local match is dependent on annual grant fund availability by FTA and the state of North Carolina. The match portion ranges from ten to fifty percent, depending on the type of funds and the availability of those funds through the state. Grants, usually administrative grants are eighty-five and fifteen with a local match. Capital costs are eighty, ten, and ten percent with a local match, capital being vehicles, things of that nature. Operating grants are funded fifty-fifty with the state, so we use other things to match those funds. So we get fifty percent from the state. Most often, we will use rope or rural operating assistant program funds to match those. The Carts budget has been approved for this next year at five million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's all three administrative, operational, and capital expenditures, of which the four counties with their responsibility is seventy-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine, or as you can see, it's approximately one point two percent of our total budget. All right, and that breaks it down. Administrative budget, that is covered by a fifty-three-eleven administrative grant. Operating budget, those are the funds that we secure through other grants, through contracted services, DSS, things of that nature. And then the capital budget, we had a lot of expenditures this year. I'm trying to bring the system up to speed, both with vehicles and technology. Most of the technology we had in the building is over ten years old. Any IT person will tell you that a server that's ten years old is looking to fail. So we have all new equipment. We also have equipment coming for the garage. Then, once we get these four pieces of equipment, we will be able to do all necessary repairs on all of our vehicles in the garage. And I've also arranged for we have, we can now do our own inspections as well. We're a licensed state inspection station, but just for our vehicles. Huge cost savings. All right. Here's a breakdown on revenues. This is our expected revenues for this next year. So as you can see, fares, administrative and capital match from the four counties, rural operating grant, fifty-three-eleven administrative grant, that's what I was speaking about a moment ago, rope allocation times four counties. That was, it shows a twenty-four allotment because at the time I made this slide, we didn't know what the twenty-five was. Our twenty-five allotment is actually sixteen hundred dollars more than this figure you're seeing on this page. So contracted services, that's anybody that contracts with us or hires us to move their folks. We bill them at a certain rate. Medicaid, if we can keep going, hopefully, we'll see that amount of money. Right now, with Medicaid, they have what's called contract or managed care is the term that they use, and they hired a broker to do the transportation portion of their, I guess, clients. So we no longer get those. Before, the transit systems received the request directly from the local DSS office. We billed DHHS through the NC Track system. We got the funds. The funds came back into the county. Now, for whatever reason, they've decided to surplus this out to other companies, and they're the ones making the money. And then the fifty-three-eleven capital grant, that'll pay for the vehicles, the server, the equipment in the garage, all of that. I want to speak briefly about rope because all four counties get it, but here's the situation we're having with rope. So each county gets three different versions or three different portions of it. It's rural, general, public. That means anybody can ride for any reason. Employment, anyone can ride going to either a job or job training, not college. If they're going to the VocEx school and learning how to weld or be a mechanic, that's job training. We can use those funds for those posts. Ed tap is elderly and disabled. When it comes to rope, it's anyone that is sixty years of age or older. So we normally apply for or ask for the counties to give us the rural, general, public funds, and you do. Sometimes, some of the counties give us employment, some won't. Ed tap, it's kind of dispersed between us and the uses of the counties. So I'm going to go off this slide here for a second and help you understand something. So Carts, we're responsible for the application. I filled it out. I've sent it out to the different counties. You all get your signatures. You send it back to us. We send it to the state. We make sure that the state has everything they knew need to appropriate those funds. Rope's a little different than other grants. Other grants, once we apply for them and they say, okay, we're going to give you three hundred thousand dollars. As we utilize these funds as trips, we then invoice the state, and the state reciprocates or pays us for these trips. Rope is different. Rope, you get the funds upfront, and the only thing that you have to do is show the utilization of them. If you don't show by reporting the utilization of these funds, you don't get them the next year. Since they think you already have, well, you do already have them. So if they gave you fifty thousand dollars for rural, general, public, and you only showed that you used forty thousand, the next year, they're going to take ten from it. They're going to give you forty. Because they say, well, you've already got the ten from last year. You haven't spent it yet. That's ten thousand dollars we've lost that we can never get back. So in the future, in FY twenty-six, this time about next year, what we're going to be doing is I'm going to be going around to the four counties, and I'm going to be asking permission from the counties that Carts become the direct recipients of these funds. Because once we get them, we do the reporting. We do the reporting on it now, and my finance manager, I cannot tell you the hours that I've heard this woman on the phone or sending emails back and forth to the four counties going, okay, you got to tell me what you did. What did you do? What did you do? How did you, how many trips did you do for this? How many trips did you do for that? Just trying to make sure that we show usage of this funding. And not in this case, but in others, we lost money this year because they couldn't show it or prove it. So by us receiving the funds, we can stay on top of it. We can report them. We have the software that'll tell us who rode, when they rode, and how much did it cost. And we can, we can send the report to the state on a monthly basis. This used to be quarterly. It's now monthly, quarterly, biannual, and then annual report is due by the end of August, correct? July, end of July. And they rolled that back to, okay. They used to give you a little breathing room to try to get these things in. The state's not so easygoing anymore about that. So anyway, in the future, we're going to have a discussion again, county managers and myself, about these rope funds and becoming a direct recipient of these rope funds so we can make sure that they get spent down. Because I can tell you right now, off the top of my head, I think it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars this year out of the four counties we lost. Yes, it's significant, but we don't want that to happen again next year. All right. Just to give you a little statistical update on the system, in the past year, from twenty-three to twenty-four and twenty-four, we did six thousand more trips than we did in twenty-three. We did it for seventy-eight hundred less hours and a hundred and five thousand less miles. So that tells you that we are doing more for less, which is better. And this is the direction I'm heading the system in. We will continue to see these types of numbers in the future. We have also new scheduling software coming that will help us do this. So that's another addition to the system. We're going to get the old, the stuff we have now is twenty years old. We need to get something newer. Franklin County ridership for the past year was twenty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-three. The overall ridership for Carts altogether was over a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-six trips.
That's trips?
Trips. That's every time somebody, one individual stepped on the bus, got to where they were going and stepped off. That's quite substantial. And the biggest issue is, and we'll talk about this in a second, but it's the rural component of it. If we have to drive thirty or forty miles out into a county somewhere to pick up one person and then bring them back, guess what? That thirty or forty miles I drove out there, I didn't make anything. We don't get paid to run around in an empty bus. It's only when that person gets on that bus and comes back do we actually make money. All right, so, some system changes. Since I started there last year with the good, good help of my manager, my finance manager, we have eliminated over $250,000 of recurring annual costs in technology and other nonessential wants. And that's just the start. We have more to come. We're trimming everything that we can trim out of the budget to try and get this system back in good settings, which it already is, but we're going to do better. We've combined vacant positions and reassigned those duties to existing staff. Trip scheduling and routing has improved and is expected to continue in that with the new scheduling software. Those were the numbers I just showed you. We did more trips for 100,000 less miles. Figure that one out. Eventual elimination of Saturday service and controls in place for new service requests to align with our service hours. Now, some people get excited when I say the elimination of Saturday service. Here's what I'm trying to do with the system. I didn't do that.
We're not going to blame you.
No, please. Okay. You've heard the, the adage, the inmates are running the prison? Okay, that's what I walked into a year ago. I'm trying to rein everything back in. I'm trying to get the system to run like a public transportation system should. When we get to that point and we're firmly secure in our finances, then we can go back and we can step out and we can say, okay, now, how can we advance the system? Maybe we look at doing more on Saturday. Maybe we'd look at doing something later in the evening. Or, we can't do it earlier in the morning. We're already out there at 4 o'clock in the morning. Maybe we can do that in the future. But first, I have to get a handle on this system and get it operating well. And we're almost there. We're really close. Take me a year and a couple of months, but I have an incredible staff who understands where I'm coming from and what I'm trying to do. So, when I say eliminate Saturdays, temporary, but it's also, it helps the system to function better. We can rein in our overtime and get everything to where we can afford what we can do, then we know what we can do in the future. With fleet replacement, we expect to save on repair costs. Our repair cost right now, because the fleet was allowed to get in the position that it's in, and I have to tell you, I have half my fleet's probably got over 300,000 miles on it, because they were not replaced in a timely manner. We got 10 last year. I got 12 right now being delivered. I have 10 more vehicles to order. Just as soon as the state says they can let me order them, I have 10 more than I'm requesting in '26. But currently, our repair costs are between $3,000 and $5,000 a month, just trying to keep these buses on the road. So, we will get there. And then also, service equipment added to our garage will eliminate external repairs. So, that's basically my rundown, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on some current challenges that we're having. So, staffing, both hiring and retention. We just gave, we just increased our starting salaries for drivers. My expectation is if we continue to do well financially this year, I'd like to look at that again and bump it up a little bit more and, and try and keep those folks that we know are, are good people and, and they want to do a good job. Scheduling efficiently due to the rural component, and I spoke on that a minute ago. When you have to drive out, turn around, pick up one person, and drive back in. So, we're looking at scheduling more in routes than we are in trips. So, if we go out 30 miles, how many people can we pick up on the way back in? So, I am in the process, we were in the process this last year of rebuilding the whole scheduling thought process for the system, and it's doing well. Fluctuating fuel costs and maintenance costs. I had no idea. I, I can't remember the last time I replaced an alternator, but my mechanic told me $1,000 for an alternator for one of these big buses. I'm just like, really? I used to buy them all day long for 50 bucks. Rising insurance costs, it's not at, but it is very close. Our insurance for the facility, the liability for the buses is almost $350,000 a year. That hurts. Have to write that check. Training requirements mandated by the government. We train, we are required to train every one of our employees at least once a month on some facet of safety or operational training, and they continue to add to us. Now, we want you to do this as well. And it's not, you would think a 30-minute training session wouldn't be that difficult to do, but when you've got to get 60 people herded, and you can't do that, because then you can't run the system. So, you have to pull two in here at this time and three in here at this time. It's a logistical nightmare trying to get everybody trained. Difficulties with replacing the aging fleet in a timely manner. Things have gotten better, but the buses that I just spoke of, the 12 that I'm receiving right now, I ordered them August 23rd of last year. Took over a year and a month to get 12 buses on the lot. The need for operational funding. If we had secure funding that we knew was going to be there over the next three, four, or five years, I could do more with salaries. I could do more with benefits. I can make Carts be the place people want to work at. And less service being requested by contracted agencies due to budget restraints. We are running into the fact that we don't have a lot of, oh, I didn't realize you had it back up there. A lot of the contracted services that we've done in the past, we're not seeing that request now, because a lot of these services, they're just, they're not getting the funding they need. So, they don't need our service. And the biggest being DSS. So, any questions?
Any board member have any questions?
I do. Do you have a lot of private pay now?
Private pay?
Uh huh. To ride Carts, ridership?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. Carts was started, just a little history, somewhere a little after 1983.
Mm-hmm, 40 years.
Yes. And at that time, we had one van with the Department of Aging, and our Department of Aging was located at the Senior Center in Franklinton. And when Carts came aboard, which was right after that sometime, I can't remember exactly year, but right after that, we contracted with Carts. It was the best thing that ever happened, because our one van was going around and picking up, you know, the senior citizens to bring them into the senior center, plus take some doctors or trips and, and get them to where they needed to go. We'd take a trip once a month somewhere. And so, our, our one van was on the road all the time. It was only so much we could do. It was a 12-passenger van. And Carts came in, and it was just a whole different ballgame when they came. It was, it, transportation right now in this county is a needed service. I do know that Carts goes over and picks up people from some of the rehab centers and the nursing homes and takes them to doctors, not just here, but in Raleigh and different places to wherever their doctors are. And of course, it does trips, and it does, we use Carts with our Department of Aging to take our senior citizens around. So, it is a real important service and a great service for this county that it came out to have a transportation service. So, any of you that say, oh, private pay, if you need transportation, you can call Carts and see if you can get on a schedule, right?
Absolutely.
We can all do that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's something else, our, speaking of private pay, our new scheduling software, we're going to be coming out with new bus passes that have a QR code on them, and that bus pass will be assigned to the person that receives it. And they'll actually be able to reload it either on a computer or on their smartphone via credit card. So, a lot of the folks who come to our office and still get the little tickets, they won't have to do that anymore.
Oh, okay, because we always did tickets. We had Carts tickets is what we had. And look, funding for Carts and budgeting is a nightmare, because you have to do the wear and tear, by mile, I mean, about what the cost to drive it, and all that stuff has to go into funding, because I used to do all that with the Department of Aging. And it, it's a nightmare, isn't it?
It is. It is. I just tried to finish up the 26 grants.
Right.
So, we were trying to wrap up 24 by the end of July, 1st of August. We haven't even started 25 yet. I only have one signed contract out of four with the state, and then we've already created the FY '26 grants to be uploaded into the system.
Right, and I'm not sure how Aging does it now, but it was unit rates. Everything was a unit rate. Is that what's done now is unit rates? Do you know?
Is it? Aging? Shared service, shared miles.
Shared service miles, yes. Because if it's one on the van, it's one rate. If it's five on the van, it's another rate for a person. Yes, that's what we did.
Yeah.
It was a nightmare. It was, it was very, it wasn't a nightmare, it was a very complicated system.
Yes. But 34 years almost into it, it's pretty much got it down to a science.
Good luck. Good luck with doing all that.
Anything else?
Randy, on the, you said about the ridership going down, like from special services. That's something that we kind of saw increase during COVID, because there was extra federal money out and coming back now, or is it just? You think it's going to come back, or you think this is?
No. So, four years ago, I, I have been on the board, with the exception of the last few months, I've been on the board of the North Carolina Public Transportation Association for the past 10 years. Four years ago, we started the fight, and we fought this. It's just not a good, I, I still don't understand how DHHS believes having a third-spoke and a two-spoke will saves money, because they're making money, and we're, we're charging them the same rate we were charging DHHS. But we fought it as long as we could fight it, when the state finally said, no, this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to run this portion of their transportation. The best we got out of it was, the transit systems were supposed to be first rider refusal. If anybody that was getting a DSS trip, we're supposed to get it before anybody else did. Didn't happen. Didn't happen. Our ridership, we were going for 30, 40,000 trips a year. We're down to 3, 4,000 maybe? I doubt if we do 3,000 or 4,000. Yeah, no. And like I say, the nice thing about that was, was it's money that stayed in the county. So, the state fed DSS, DSS fed us, and it fed the county coffers.
Jobs.
Jobs. It was good all the way around. And now, you have a third-party person doing it, and mom-and-pop taxi company's doing, doing the trips. And the thing is, you know, we have a $5 million insurance policy on our vehicles to meet DSS requirement. You're going to tell me that mom-and-pop's minivan service has got a $5 million? No.
Do we have that many in, even in Franklin County?
No, you haven't. They're all over. They're all over. Yeah, it's competition. It really is.
Like Uber?
Well, no. I mean, they do what we do, but they just do it on a smaller scale. And more or less have like minivans with ramps and things of that nature.
But they can't, oh, but, so, but we can use that money for them?
No, we don't want to.
We don't want to.
We want to keep that money.
They're saying that the state says we can.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the state. This is all because of what's what the state says we have to do.
That's not what that agency was starting up to do.
No, it was not.
No.
So, but I'm telling you, we fought it. We fought it for four years. So.
Wow.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, our next action item is Item B, Public Safety Radio System Update. Kristy Sharon, Emergency Communications Director, will introduce Ken Steer from Williams Communications to update the board on the Public Safety Radio System implementation. Rebecca Norwood with TUSA Consulting will also be in attendance. Sharon?
Good evening. I'm going to switch things up a little bit on you tonight. At your last meeting, there were some questions and concerns raised regarding Change Order 2 that was presented back in August. So, I'm going to introduce Rebecca Norwood with TUSA Consulting to come up and talk to you about the coverage piece that was in that change order. And Ken with Williams Communication is here if we have any questions for him. So, we're, we're going to flop who's speaking tonight. All yours, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me back again. I'll stand over near the microphone here. Last time I came and gave an update from TUSA's behalf was in January, so it's been some time. But I did not watch live your last board meeting. I did watch the video. I've watched it a few times, trying to understand some of the questions that you guys have, listened to some of the comments tonight, and I have a brief presentation, but please stop me if you have questions along the way. And there's quite a few numbers in here, so if you need details on any of that, I can get that for you as well. Okay. So, really quickly, one of the words I heard come up several times is due diligence. I want to talk about that and the risk analysis that goes with that, what a coverage guarantee is in the county and for this contract, and then future growth coverage options. Okay, so, every vendor that responded to your RFP, and quite honestly, every vendor that responds to any of TUSA's RFPs is required to do a certain level of due diligence. This is just the big-ticket items. They have to check and make sure that it's not in a flood hazard zone on the FEMA website. They have to do an FAA tow air, is how you say it. And the tow air is a very brief introductory question to the FAA of can I build this or not? And you get one of two decisions immediately. You get an absolutely no, you may not build this, or a please proceed with the full application. There's never a yes. The vendor did that. Williams did that for all of the tower sites. There's also the FAA overlay districts that they'd have to take a look at, and I'm going to show you that map here in a minute. And there is a portion of the map that overlays around the airport that is where you would have gotten the hard no, and I'll show you where that is. Then, they have to go do a visual inspection and make sure that they are not going to violate any of the SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office requirements. So, they can't put it in the middle of a cemetery, you know, in the middle of a Nashville battlefield, things like that, that are obvious to you when you walk out. And the last thing they have to do is a visual inspection for NEPA, which is the Environmental Protections Act, an agency. And you have to make sure that you're not putting it in the middle of a swamp or a watershed, in the middle of some sort of endangered species sanctuary, things of that nature. So, all of those things were completed as part of the proposal process. Any questions on that? Okay. So, once we move into actually executing the project, then we have to go fill out all the full applications. So, with the FAA, the FCC, SHPO, NEPA, all of those things can take, I've seen them go as quickly as eight months for the whole set, and I've seen them go, you know, a year and a half, sometimes longer, especially with the SHPO stuff. But each one of those applications, any one of them can be a landmine to stop a project. If any one of those people comes back and says, no, you're in the FAA flight hazard zone, no, you're in the middle of a flood plane, no, you are in the middle of a cemetery that you didn't know about, any of those things can stop a project quickly. When you get down past that, you go to the local permitting, and being able to purchase or lease the land, being able to get the easements to access the land, all of the special use permitting that goes along with that, you guys have seen several of those come before you, any of those can stop a site from being built. But none of those things are known until you get down the application process path. That's not something that can be easily anticipated upfront. The last one I put on there, happily, we didn't have a problem with, and this one is structural. If you're co-locating on a tower and you go and do a structural analysis and find that the tower isn't capable of holding your equipment, that can also cause you to have to abandon a site. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Long list.
I, I've got a question.
Okay.
That's relevant to, I guess, to due diligence and some of these items that you've got here.
Okay.
I question why, I hear what you're saying, but I question, why can you not know that the FAA is going to shoot you down way farther in front of this? Why can you not know? That you, you're saying you can't until you get through the application process and all that?
Yep.
Something's wrong with that picture to me.
So, if you look at this map here, it's lots going on, but you can see blue circles around the airport. I'm going to answer your question by showing you this. And then, shooting right down 401, you can see these really tightly packed blue lines. We can say upfront, looking at this map, anything in those very tightly packed blue lines shooting down 401 is no, you can't do it. But once you step outside of those rings and that line, technically, you are outside of the hazard overlay zone of the airport. And then the FAA gets to make whatever decision they want to make. I have seen it where they've said, yeah, sure, you can do whatever you want. And then in the case of actually two of your sites, they said, no, you have to lower your, your tower heights. So they were outside of those tightly packed blue lines. One of them was completely outside of the rings. One of them was inside the rings on that, that northwest side. So the FAA has a process and they don't tell you the answer until the end of the process. Especially if you're out, it could have happened anywhere in the county. It just happened to be the ones closest to the airport.
Which one was on the inside of the rings?
Royal.
Royal?
Yes. But yeah, I, I don't think I can zoom in, but, um, there's a big orange blob in the center just outside of that, on the west side is a small orange square. That is where Royal is and it's inside the rings. It happens to be on the side of the runway, which makes it slightly more advantageous for the FAA rather than towards the end.
Did we change the height of the Royal Tower?
We had to decrease that one as well based on the FAA's requirement. And unfortunately, both of those are in the same part of the county.
Both that and the New Hope.
And the New Hope site. Yes, that's correct.
I would say we have to.
I have, um, did I answer your question? I, I, why the FAA can't give you an earlier response is not something that I can say. They, they get a certain amount of days dictated by law to review and put it out for public comment and do all this other stuff before they give you those answers. If I could get them to do it faster, that would make a lot of projects.
Was inside the ring, we already knew that would have to be decreased.
We, we were hopeful because it was on the side of the, of the runway. You usually have a little more latitude on the side of the runway than you do towards the end. But because of the direction that your runway runs, which is right down four oh one, it makes it a lot harder to get coverage in that area without putting one near it. So that New Hope one is, I mean, you could like throw a rock from there and you're in the hazard zone. That's how close it is. So New Hope was planned to be three thirty, it was reduced to two ninety-four. Royal was planned to be three twenty-five, it was reduced to three seventeen. The New Hope one actually came back preliminary, they wanted us to reduce it to one forty-three. And we were able to go out to public comment and get, gather enough feedback that they would accept the two ninety-four. I mean, the, yeah, the two ninety-four. So we actually got lucky there, they could have completely cut that one off in half.
Rebecca, can I just, because I know in my industry, there's something called a safety factor. Is there any type of, are you familiar with that?
Yes, yes.
Is there any type of factoring, tolerance factoring or anything like that that goes into the plan and design of this? That, you know, optimum is this, and then we're going to just be sure we don't get a black eye down the road. We're going to add fifteen, twenty percent. You know, extra coverage or.
Yes, so yes, that did happen, absolutely. Um, the coverage guarantee is like the minimum qualification and, and vendors will typically over engineer to make sure that even if things go a little awry. The problem we have with this situation is three sites, all in the same corner of the county. Two of them FAA height reductions. We were able to salvage the Bunn relocation by making it several tens of feet taller, um, and, and recover in that way. But those, both of those two reductions caused what I'm about to talk about next. So we call signal loss attenuation. Um, we kind of categorize it in these buckets, if you will, uh, follow me along this picture here. So the human body actually creates signal loss for a radio. When you have it on your hip and the signal is trying to pass through the human body, that's roughly around six dB. Um, it's a little more than that when the person is sitting in a vehicle with their radio mashed up against the seat and behind their seatbelt. But six dB walking around on the street, uh, a typical residential structure, wood framed that you would see in this area is somewhere around ten dB of loss of signal strength, small, single convenience stores, uh, little shops, things like that, usually around ten to fifteen. And this is where we start to get into ranges because depending on the type of construction, metal, concrete, whatever it is, the, it applies a little bit differently to a range. And then the dense buildings category, which is what we're really talking about here today, starts somewhere around eighteen dB and goes up. I've seen elementary schools that were built like bunkers and were in the forty dB range loss. So it can vary by building and when it was constructed and what it was constructed out of. So your coverage guarantee is broken down by countywide coverage. Mobile radios in the car, portable radios someone's carrying on their hip. And those grids are broken out all across the county in these little half mile squares. And there are two thousand eight hundred and three of those. In the corridor of the roads, there, and the city circles. So those circles are three miles from the center of the city out, which for most of your cities is quite a bit of overlap over the city limits. Um, so lots of room for growth from the towns. Um, there are two thousand four hundred and eighteen grids, quarter mile grids in those areas. The amount of grids that we are talking about being impacted by these two FAA height reductions is a total of sixty grids, which is one point one five percent of the grids. I was just talking about the different types of coverage. The countywide coverage, mobile is considered zero dB. They're outside, the antenna's on top of the car, they're not usually inside a building. That's ninety-seven percent. This specific change order has no change impact to that. Countywide portable on the hip, zero dB, they already factor in that six dB loss for the people wearing the radio on their hip. Ninety-seven percent, there's no change to that. The countywide portable residential, those are inside the ten dB loss buildings, um, wood frame buildings. Ninety-five percent, no change to that. The city, this is where it starts to change a little bit. The city boundaries, um, Williams actually gave you an extra five dB inside the city boundaries at ninety-five percent. The request was only for, uh, for twenty instead of twenty-five. And then inside the rings themselves, outside of the city limits is, um, twenty dB at ninety-five percent. There's no change to that either. So where is the change? In those highway corridors, um, which is a four oh one and US one and a one mile boundary, if you were to draw outside of it. The guarantee was for twenty dB on ninety-five percent of those grids that you saw. And what we are talking about doing is removing those sixty tiles from the twenty dB, which let's go back to the categories, from the twenty dB and moving them to eighteen dB. So we're staying in the same bucket. We're reducing the attenuation or the frequency loss by two dB. What does that mean to you? Let me scroll down a little bit here. Um, so that, that means that, uh, in the countywide, there are fourteen point seven six square miles that will have less than three dot four DAQ. Let me explain that. So when we test audio quality on a radio system, we check it for clarity and how often you have to repeat. That number means three point four in this scale. When you drop below three point four to three point oh, um, the signal strength is, um, capable of still reaching the radio, but you may have to repeat yourself every once in a while in, in those particular areas. So that means that fourteen point seven six square miles of the county outdoor, you might have to repeat yourself once in a while. It doesn't mean that there's no signal in that area whatsoever. You guys with me still so far? Okay. So when we were looking at this and we got the letter back from the FAA, we said, okay, what, what does this mean for the end users? And there's three pictures here, and if you move from left to right, the first picture is the coverage that was guaranteed at the three point four. So you rarely have to repeat yourself in that area. The, the blue is where there may be a little bit of issue with the three point four. Um, at the twenty dB with the old tower height. If we wanted to keep the twenty dB at the new tower height, the blue spills out ever so slightly. And then if we do it at eighteen dB, it goes back to much closer to was for the contractual coverage. Now, remember, that doesn't mean you can't talk in those blue areas. It just means you might have to repeat yourself every once in a while. Um, I've also been told by Williams that, um, they think it's possible because of their over engineering. They may actually come in at, at the twenty dB signal loss guarantee. But they feel uncomfortable writing, giving you guys that expectation, knowing that the tower heights did have an impact on coverage. So the next question, um, I do want to point out too here, it was mentioned that the twenty dB was countywide and that is not, it's just in those corridors and in those cities. It's not, it's ten dB countywide and that is not impacted by this change. So the question also often comes up, okay, we've got this impact, we're not really a big fan of it. You know, what, how would we keep the twenty dB if we wanted to? If we decided that was the thing with the FAA height reduction still in the mix? And there are several ways they can do that. I think, um, it may have been a little hard to hear me when I was talking over the phone at your meeting a month ago, but this is kind of what I was trying to get out. Um, we've already built in some growth into your plan. The three miles from the city centers, the highway corridors such as that, we, we've already tried very hard to build in quite a bit of growth. Ninety-seven percent, um, countywide too is, is pretty hefty. I don't, you're not ninety-seven percent populated landmass wise, so there's quite a bit of growth there. But in the future, um, it's very rare for a system to ever reach a hundred percent. At some point, there's diminishing returns trying to chase that last percent. So as growth happens, you can be strategic about where you put that extra coverage. And you can do that with things like vehicular repeaters, which is a box that goes in the vehicle that relays the signal back at a much higher power to the tower. And it gives a little local area network to the users that are on the ground. The most common thing we see are the in-building repeaters. They're called BDAs, bidirectional amplifiers. Those can range from about twenty thousand to ninety thousand dollars per building, depending on the building. And those provide in-building coverage specifically for dense buildings when they appear. There are a number of ordinances in IFC and NFPA, building codes that talk all about how to put these in, how to test them, you know, how to have an annual inspection done to make sure. Um, I, I can tell you right now, it is probable that at least one of your buildings on your critical building list will be greater than twenty-five dB of signal loss. It, it is just statistically probable that that is the case. And in that case, you will have to probably look and see if a BDA is going to be the right solution for that building. I can't tell you which one it is yet, but usually it's, big schools, big churches have one stairwell or one basement or one something where the signal loss is just too great. That's, that's very common. But we will be testing hundreds, hundreds of critical buildings to, to make sure we find those before it's a problem. And then the last thing that you can do is build a tower. Um, if, if this is a really big concern, um, and you think that it's an imminent concern for growth, you can also build a tower. Those range in the million dollar range, once you buy all the equipment for it. And I will remind you, because of where we are trying to put it, um, you're going to have to stay outside of that flight path hazard zone. Um, you may actually still run into similar problems trying to build that one as well. For the, for the two B dB difference that you've seen. So I hope that clarifies what the change was. Um, I know there was a lot of questions about the change order in general, and I just want to separate the Bunn High School Tower move and the costs associated with that. This, what we're asking for in this portion has no cost associated with it, um, to make this change. All that cost was associated with all of the other tower work.
All right. Any board members? Any other questions, concerns?
Just a comment. It still sounds like to me that we're not getting what we bargained for. I keep hearing all this stuff, but it still sounds like we're not getting what we bargained for. What we're paying for, I'll spell it out. This sounds fishy to me.
You know, in the last meeting, I did ask, were we, were we going to be able to decrease the price since we're decreasing the tower?
Uh huh.
I did ask.
You have a board members? I, I have one question. If and whenever we get to the final phase, isn't there a testing where you go out and actually do it? Of course, my question, even that question, how do you simulate density when you're testing?
Great question. So we're going to have teams of people, teams from the vendor, teams from TUSA, teams from the county, all going out together. They're going to drive into each and every one of those grids, sometimes multiple times. It will take weeks and we will do a radio voice check. Can you hear me now? That sort of thing. And there's also a machine connected to a computer that has an antenna with an attenuator on it that creates signal loss in the same way that a building would. And it takes the reading of the signal level after that guaranteed signal loss and tells you whether or not you would be able to.
The density part.
Yes, yes. So we will have matter of fact, black and white results at the end of that test period of which ones passed and which didn't.
And if it goes through all that testing, we don't get what we bargained for or failure on some of these grids or a lot of them. Do we have recourse on that?
Yes, so back in this slide right here, you know, let's use, for example, any one of these. If, if they make it to ninety-four point seven percent, that's not ninety-five and they technically have failed the test.
Okay, and that?
And, and then they are responsible for making up the additional point three or whatever it is.
They.
Williams Communications. Yes, but again.
Before they get paid.
Before they get, that, there's a lot of, actually, the committee did an excellent job of holding back a whole bunch of money till the end of this project to make sure that, that it got built right. So, yes.
Any other questions? I think this report here is just for, just receive an update. No action requested. All right, counselor?
And that's the change order to lower the tower.
It has multiple things in it. Um, the change order has the relocation of the Bunn Tower from the Bunn Fire Station to Bunn High School. Um, there's a few other things like New Hope, they found an enormous boulder underground, which is not considered normal soil for this area. That's something else they have to prove. Um, and it had to be shifted and relocated a little bit to be able to get around that. There's, I think there's like twelve thousand dollars worth of work and reengineering in that. Um, you have the whole list. There, there are several things in there, but they're not all just the tower that, that we're discussing tonight.
But this topic in this presentation is the question that the board asked at the last meeting. An explanation on so that we could move ahead with change. And I think it was in regard of, and. Yes, the board's already approved it. I think if I remember correctly, the question was the lowering of the New Hope Tower. Is that, is that correct? That's what I think, out of the whole change order, that was our question.
And the dollar amount.
That, well, the change order with the dollar amount, yes.
The dollar amount of the change order is not related to the coverage piece that she was talking to. That's a no cost change. The dollar amount is related to moving of the Bunn, um, site from the Bunn Fire Station one to Bunn High School and for extending out the, the schedule to allow for the construction of Bunn High School.
That was only one part of it. There was like two or three different parts in that.
Right, but the, the coverage piece that she was just talking to didn't come with any dollar amount. The dollar amount was just, just those items that we named.
I, I was, I was looking at that as well, and there's several slides with dollar amounts that you guys represented. And then there was a final slide that was just other information and that last slide was the one that had. and that last slide was the one that had the coverage change on it and there was no dollar value associated with that.
And, and the coverage at the New Hope Tower was the question.
That came up last meeting.
Yes, that was the question after the last meeting. We were thinking about it and we had come, comments about, because we were lowering the New Hope Tower and decreasing the coverage in that area. That was the question.
Counselor? Are you in with it? Right, any other commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd make a motion that we do New Hope Tower from the change order. Move forward. Bun part, moving the Bun Tower part of it. And discuss this further tonight, even in close. Board as quickly as possible. Still have some questions about coverage. And I want to make sure everyone is on board. We're moving too quick. And I think I don't see why we can't do that.
With the, without doing the, the New Hope part of it.
That's right.
That's good. But everything else?
Yes.
On go.
But I unders, did I understand correctly in your presentation that the builder feels like even if the towers decrease some, that we'll still have a great coverage and not as low as we thought we would have?
Oh yeah, I mean, this slide right here, at 18 dB from 20 dB, you're still in the dense building category. The, the 2 dB loss is barely negligible. There are many RFPs that come out and 15 dB is the max they ever even go to. I, I personally thought this was an excellent trade for what you guys were dealt by the FAA. And at the end of the day, the contract that you guys signed with Williams is, has certain sites and certain heights and it, to their, basically all they're allowed to do for due diligence, it says, if the FAA or the FCC comes back and says no for any reason to these heights, then we have to renegotiate basically what it comes down to. And they can, if you guys are really wanting additional coverage in that area, those extra 2 dBs in those dense buildings, there are ways to get it. TUSA didn't feel like you had lost so much that it would have a significant effect to the users. I, I would hazard the guess that in that area, it's possible that most people would have never known between 20 and 18 dB. So, that's what we're really talking about is that one category of dense building coverage. Everything else is exactly the way you, you signed up for, which is a testament to how over-engineered it was. Does that answer your question? Yeah. So, even if we want to table that part, we will have to go back to the negotiation table since the FAA lowered those tower heights. It, it's not something we can put off until the end of the system project, but we can put it off tonight.
So, what would you be negotiating?
Whether or not the county wants to add towers, add BDAs or add vehicular repeaters, or if they're willing to accept the coverage decrease.
To make up for that loss.
To make up for that loss.
And those are the things you're talking about that we could make up for the loss.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we'd love more money.
Yes, yes. No, they are not. That's correct.
And once the Bun Tower is up and we are into testing, this may solve itself anyway.
That's right. That's, that's the other problem here is it's very possible that you could go do the testing and it actually gets to 20 dB. But based on a predictive coverage software, which is what they're going off of, 18 is what they can promise you.
Right, that's what you just said and that's what I was trying to get back to.
Yes, yeah.
That it could possibly be okay.
Yes, and again, remember, it's at the 3.4, which is the very rarely have to repeat. It is very likely at 20 dB at the occasionally have to repeat. It doesn't mean no coverage.
But all in all, in the end, this is going to get tested.
Yes.
Grid by grid.
Yes.
Thoroughly.
Painfully. If you want to go ride with us for three weeks in the car, you are welcome to come.
We're all more than welcome.
We need volunteers. It takes like 20, 30 people to get this done, so yes.
Let me ask you this. Testing is done. Quality. And there are ways to make this up.
Yes.
And where is that cost gone off? Taxpayers?
Good question.
Yes, that's a good question. So, as the contract stands today, because the tower height reductions happened from a federal agency outside of the control of Williams, the liability associated with that is not, does not fall to them.
To get it.
Yes.
Means we have to pay for repeaters.
It would only be in that 2 dB 60 tile area, yes. That's right. That's right, that's right. Well, you still have the border, you still have this area. If you notice the grids outside of the county, you still have that area that's covered mobile, portable on the hip and residential unaffected.
All right. There's been a motion made.
How will it affect if we carry out with this motion? Will it hold up any?
If you remove that section and move forward the rest of it, we will still have to negotiate what happened because of the FAA tower height, but it won't stop the Bun High School boom.
Won't stop the forward movement. If we remove the coverage acceptance test change that came as a result of the New Hope Tower and you approve everything else in the change order, we still keep moving forward. We can go back and reevaluate with the vendor, with TUSA, with the committee, come back and say, okay, this is the options. If we come up short, this is what you're looking at as well, how we're going to address that and come back at a later date. That part.
Okay.
If we don't decide, if we don't approve this piece and settle on this piece tonight, as long as the rest of it moves forward, it's not going to hold up progress.
Okay, then I second the motion. Just so that we can have a little bit more discussion between ourselves in the next week or two and then we can come back and add that piece. Does that sound?
Put it back on for the next meeting.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I agree with that. Then we could just, so we can feel comfortable with it.
That's right.
All right, put it, put it where it comes back up at our next meeting.
No later than that.
Okay.
Preferably before.
Okay.
Well, we need to be able to have some time to talk amongst ourselves.
Yeah, that's right.
So, we may want to wait and go into a closed session, talk amongst ourselves and then bring it back out. Well, we could do that after the closed session. Yeah. There we go.
The New Hope.
That, that's right, just the New Hope. Pull that out further. Yes.
Right.
And?
And then our next meeting include that in our closed session so we can have some discussion about what we found out. Between now and then.
Man, I'm.
I was wanting to make another motion to a closed session. Meeting to discuss while we have the expertise here and I would also like for Daryl Chalk to join that discussion.
I guess my question, why we're going to all do all this in closed session?
So, that closed session is not.
Just about radio.
However, y'all want to do it.
I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a closed session. Whatever.
We're talking about radio towers, why is it?
Yeah, exactly.
I should.
Yeah.
But does that closed session have to be on this agenda tonight? Would it have to be included on the agenda tonight in order to have it?
Correct.
We can vote.
We can vote. Well.
Yeah.
Why not table it to, to our next meeting's closed session? Why does it have to be done?
So.
Tonight, I mean, I understand, but why tonight? I'm just trying to get an understanding.
If, if you're looking for dollar amounts for the other options that she mentioned, I, I'm not sure that she's going to be able to give you specific dollar amounts tonight.
Give you round numbers.
It would be round numbers.
You're saying it would be better to have this discussion our next.
Well, the other advantage you have tonight is the vendor and myself are both here this meeting to answer your questions that come out of that. But we can be here at another meeting if you request us to be.
I think we've heard the answers and if we hold on to this stuff, don't y'all? That we could have conversation amongst ourselves? I don't either.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Thank you for.
You've done a good job.
The chance, thank you.
Okay, been a motion to second. Any other discussion? Here none? It's a pleasure to board. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We'll have this on the agenda for our next meeting.
That's right.
Right. With the exception of New Hope.
That's right.
Right.
And there was a second motion.
No, I just stated that I was planning on making. That's right.
All right, no other motions. All right. All right, moving right along to another act, our next action item is item C. Triangle North Franklin Business Park Phase Two Road Water and Sewer Project Construction Bid Award Recommendation. Barbara Federa, Economic Development Director, will introduce Nate Harvey with Kim Lee Horn to present the bid tab and recommended bid for Phase Two Road Project at Triangle North Franklin Business Park. Ms. Marvin?
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, sir.
So, we're here to talk about the Triangle North Franklin Phase Two Road Project. And this road is going to be about approximately 2,470 feet, seven, 2,475 linear feet of a two-lane shoulder section roadway. It's going to also have construction of storm drainage systems, approximately 2,475 linear feet of eight-inch potable water extension. Will also have a construction of approximately 3,506 linear feet of sanitary sewer extension that will go along the proposed roadway. The total North Carolina Department of Commerce Industrial Development Fund grant amount we received was 2,144,107.5. We anticipate completion of this road project by May 20th, 2025. The project timeline, last year, September 20, September 5th, 2023, Kim Lee Horn was selected as the engineering firm to do the design of the new access road, which will leave Airport Road and go into the Phase Two area. On August the 8th of this year, we issued a road construction bid package. And on August 30th, we received four companies responding to that bid and for, we did, did four bid announcement, four, four bid openings, apologies. At this time, I'd like to introduce Nate Harvey, the project manager for Kim Lee Horn, who will go over the map where the road's going to be and the bid tabulations.
Good evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have, so feel free to stop me. I've been marinating in this project for around about a year, so it's all kind of packed into my head, but understand if it's not in y'all's heads. Looking down here, I guess y'all have it on the screen down here, but in the, in the lower left of this figure, font's a little bit small. I didn't realize the screen size here. We have the, the Triangle North Executive Airport there in the lower left. North is kind of off and to the right of the picture. The, the roadway that you see through there, the existing road is Airport Road. Off to the right, we have US 401. And then down off the left-hand side, that goes down toward Sam Horton Road. The Phase Two area is the area that is more or less from that pond. It's kind of in the center of the screen through the mostly cleared, some planted pines area and then up to that, that creek line that's close to the top of the figure. There's multiple, multiple designated parcel areas, we'll call them in there, that are available for purchase. We will be connecting to Airport Boulevard or Airport Road there at the lower left-hand side. As Barbara said, we'll go about 2,500 feet, about half a mile of two-lane shoulder section road, so no curb and gutter ditch sections on the side. The water line connects up there at Airport Road and extends back to the cul-de-sac at the end. The sanitary sewer starts at the top of the hill, which is where the roadway connects to Airport Road, runs back to the cul-de-sac. And then you can see it running cross-country there across one stream and then tying back to existing gravity sewer infrastructure there on Airport Road, again at the, at the lower right-hand side of the figure. We'll go through the, probably stop there. Are there any questions on what the project is? All right, move forward just for a, a brief tabulation of the bids. We do have more detailed information if, if you guys are interested in it. The four bids that we received, they're just tabulated here in numerical order. Cardinal Civil had a bid of 1.9 million and change. They are the apparent low bidder, meaning they were the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. The evaluation that we did for this award recommendation was some basic background check information on their history. They are licensed to do the work that they are proposing to do. They did not have any errors in their bid form. The only error that we had in the entire, all of the four bids was a single arithmetic error on the triangle grading and paving bid that was corrected and did not change the, the order of the bids. So, we, Kim Lee Horn would recommend that, that Cardinal Civil is awarded this contract.
All right, you've heard the recommendation.
So, we request that the board approves a recommended bidder and allow the county manager to execute all necessary documents with the appropriate review by the county attorney. Thank you.
Live for proof request. And a motion made in a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, the item D is Epsom Park, EARTF Grant Construction Bid Award Recommendation. William Dorfer, Assistant County Manager, will introduce Joe Hung, landscape architect and project manager with Benish to discuss the Epsom Park Phase One Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Project. Mr. Dorfer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. So, as the chairman pointed out, we are here to talk about the Epsom Park Phase One Project. And with me I have Joe Hung with Benish, the design firm, who has been working on this project since master plan and through the application process. And now I'll let Joe talk about the construction bid process.
Thank you, Will. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. So, I'm here to present the recommendation for a bid award for the construction of Epsom Park Phase One. And before I get to that, just a quick refresher on what Epsom Park is. So, it's a seven and a half acre site located at intersection of Highway 39 and Eves Road in Epsom. It's across from the Epsom Fire and Rescue Building. This is the proposed site plan for the project. So, the, the project includes a new parking lot with 36 parking spaces. Two of those spaces will be accessible, shade trees and then sight lighting by Duke Energy. We're proposing a playground, which will have port-in-place rubber safety surfacing, a two-to-five-year-old play structure, five-to-12-year-old play structure and a swing set. It's a rendering from one of the playground vendors that we reached out to at the beginning of this project to give kind of an idea of what the playground could look like. Next to that is a, just an open. Next to that is a, just an open lawn space, which is kind of held in reserve for a possible future exercise station. Uh, we've also got two sets of cornhole boards that are proposed there. And then behind that is a prefabricated restroom, um, and picnic shelter building. It's, the water is fed on a new well and, um, sanitary will run to a new septic field in the site. There's some of the, um, images from the construction documents for the, the picnic shelter. Uh, we've also got a sand volleyball court that's proposed. Um, throughout the site, we have various site furnishings. They're also proposed. Um, underneath the picnic shelter, we've got both standard picnic tables and ADA accessible picnic tables. Um, two grills, two charcoal grills by the picnic shelters, um, and then trashcans and benches kind of scattered throughout the site. And then, um, also some bike racks. Uh, part of this project includes a multipurpose field. It's going to be an open grass field for events or for any kind of like informal sports, um, activities. And then surrounding the site is an asphalt, um, walking trail. And then we've also got concrete sidewalks throughout to, um, provide circulation from the, the parking areas to the, to the various activities. So the project was advertised on the Franklin Times website. Um, plans were sent to several plan room holders and Benish reached out to contractors we have worked with in the area on July twenty-third. Uh, pre-bid meeting was held on August sixth onsite, and bids were due and a public bid opening occurred on August twentieth. Um, as you can see, we've received three, um, competitive bids. The lowest responsible bidder was H.G. Reynolds, um, with a base bid and allowances for one million two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Project also included two alternates, um, both for concrete sidewalks. And that was increasing the width of some concrete sidewalks and higher traffic areas from six feet to eight feet. So their, their total bid was one million two hundred ninety thousand eight hundred dollars. So we recommend, um, and we reviewed their entire bid package and found no issues with the, with any of their paperwork or anything. Um, so Benish recommends the award of the base bid plus alternates to H.G. Reynolds for one million two hundred ninety thousand eight hundred dollars.
Any questions? Any board member? All right, what's the? Does your own good board?
I'd make a motion that we approve the recommended bid.
A little bit. Been a motion made?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, going to item five on our agenda is appointments. Are any appointments to be made or considered? Here none. We'll go on to item six of the business. Any other business?
Yes. Right.
Okay.
Um, I've been in contact with our sheriff, um, who has reached out to me regarding the, the pay for his department and the ability to maintain staff, their current salaries based on competition, other. Paying, paying more, paying off. And after talking to him, his concern is his ability to continue to provide the safety necessary and required by citizens of this county, manpower and things of that nature. He had a meeting last week with our county manager, shared with him a little bit of what forecast. Pay classifications that that have an amount proposed. Not. Necessary. So tonight I'd like to make a motion. Effective October first, we make a budget of one million seventy-three thousand dollars. The sheriff's department or salaries for the parts, all of them, all of them, all. The sheriff can put together a proposed plan of where he need to be with his staff. So I make that form of a motion, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
One million seventy-four thousand.
All right, there's been a motion made in a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd like to know what, how much is, um, in the, the new employment plan that we haven't seen yet for the sheriff's department?
Between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand, based on the projections that we have, based on the study that was conducted.
So about five hundred thousand. And what is your motion for? How much?
One million seven.
So we're just adding another five hundred and some thousand. From.
Okay. So I didn't think the pay plan classification was done with yet or presented.
Been completed. We're working.
So you're saying it's not really completed then, but how can you say figures on it if you?
Those were the estimated.
Estimates.
That was the question. That's the estimate. And that was the estimated.
And that five hundred thousand is already budgeted in there.
Correct.
We just got, we just got a little bit further.
We've already budgeted pay plan. Pay plan.
Right, right.
Five hundred thousand is for the sheriff's department. We've already got it budgeted. So we're asking for another five hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
An addition, additional.
Well, if, if the number is right, I, I agree with what you're saying. So that's why I gave a specific number so that it's very clear on what the question is that I agreed. We've already budgeted this year for almost something what appears to be close to half of that.
Okay. I for one, I mean, I mean, I believe paying people just as much as I can, because that's the most important thing we have, is our people. But the only thing I question about doing this before we come out with that rest, rest of that pay plan classification, how much is everybody else getting in this deal? That's my big. But I mean, other departments.
Understand, I just.
Right, I mean, there's more to it than just, you know, law enforcement. There's all our other departments. And I want to make sure.
That's two.
Do for them.
That's two, public safety is a ma- as a critical thing. And from my understanding, from research that I have done, Nash County is paying considerable more. From what I'm hearing.
If I pay plan, our new pay plan was supposed to bring up our salaries to be competitive. If they're only five hundred and it's going to take a lot, uh, double that, then that pay plan is not competitive, in my opinion.
So let me just speak to the post-pay, pay plan includes, for the sheriff's office, that five hundred thousand includes parity with Nash.
That's what it's based on.
Yes, to bring parity with Nash. Along with the, of course, the purpose of the salary classification compensation study is to bring parity across all layers of the organization.
And you're saying, Danny, it doesn't?
From what I'm hearing, uh.
What you're hearing.
Yes. I don't have facts in front of me, no, but from what I'm hearing.
But I would like to make sure, because we have other critical services like EMS, fire departments.
Well, we already barking a mess up.
We do.
We're good.
We did it all by itself.
We did it all by itself.
Over a year, yeah. Been a long time.
Yes, we did.
All right, any other dis?
I'm sorry, Kim, do you have the statistics to compare between Franklin County and Nash County? Do you have them on here? Do you mind sharing?
I, I couldn't quote them immediately.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but we can certainly talk about.
All right, any other commissioners? Any other?
My, my motion is to get him to one, one million seventy-four thousand. Part of that, which we don't know the exact number, is part of already in what we have prepared. So be it, because I don't know what that number is, I couldn't give you. So my, my motion is that October one goes to that line and goes up by one million seventy-four thousand. And then do what he needs to do with his salaries. He can work through HR to tell what employee is going to want him how. So my motion is one million seventy-four thousand added to the sheriff's budget effective January, I'm sorry, October first for salaries.
Which includes the original.
Yeah, I think that's probably reasonable.
I, I'm hearing two things here. I, I'm, I'm hearing increased to one million seventy-four thousand, and I'm hearing increased by.
No.
Also, I'm hearing two things here.
So, so, so I'm, so let's get rid of the confusion of the pay classification study, because that's not here yet. It's not, it's not active. It's not complete. So time being of the essence, one million seventy-four thousand will do what the sheriff believes he needs to be able to do on his side, and just like the manager just said, and take sheriff's department, the jail and courts, the bailiffs, out of this proposal that is coming. By doing that, that roughly five hundred thousand in there will just come out. And so whatever we budgeted for, we add the difference to get to one million seventy-four.
We're increasing by.
Six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Whatever that number is, yes, sir. Because I don't have that.
Okay, I'm on board. I just wanted to clarify that.
My, uh, my, the next thing that we need to clarify is this October first date. Does that mean that their salaries will be increased on October first?
Yes, so what that does is that gives them three quarters of the budget, the first quarter. So there's enough money in there for him to raise as necessary in his budget until June the third.
And the pay study is supposed to be effective October first?
October fourteenth is the pay study effective.
Okay, I was confused by that. I thought it was October first also.
It's coincidental with the paper. There aren't any.
You still don't know the details?
We're working through those details, meeting the department. Yes.
But you aren't sure that, with the internet right now.
Details a long time.
We've set up meetings with department heads to go over the.
So you think that, that the details is providing five hundred thousand for the sheriff's department?
That's our rough estimate, yes.
Rough estimate.
After meeting with the sheriff and clarifying a few.
Right, any other discussion? Here none? There's been a motion made in a second. I'm sorry.
No, I'm not asking you to put payroll October first. I'm asking for the general, I'm asking for the budgets, for the, for the sheriff's budget to be effective October first by that amount. You all can work out the logistics. He, he has a responsibility to tell you what the new pays need to be and who they are. No, that's not my decision. My decision is to get the money there so he can make the decision and get it with his people where they need to be. But I'll let the staff and, and the sheriff work all that out. No, it's no problem. That's good clarity, good point of clarification. And that's why I did October first, because with this coming, it gives you all time to, to navigate from then with the fourteen is the fight plan.
All right, I, I just have one other comment. I hopefully, we look at all the other departments in this county, though. Everybody's important, because there's other emergency people, plus other duties in this, uh, senior centers. All of the twenty-some departments. Hopefully, look at them with the, this attitude. And getting ready to go with the. Yeah.
I would have hoped that the pay study would have done that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Right, uh.
Add, add that, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any other business? All right, moving on to item seven, board manager and clerk's comments. And I'll start off with her attorney, if she's got any comments. None? Ms. Kristen King? No comments. Commissioner Bun?
I have no comment.
Commissioner London?
Yes, on Sunday, um, I attended the service for Fire Captain, uh, Ray Patterson of the Lewisburg Fire Department. And I just wanted to publicly offer my condolences to his family, um, to his friends, to his coworkers, and the members of the Lewisburg, uh, Fire Department, as well as the surrounding fire departments. And I'm just grateful for his service, uh, to the town of Lewisburg, as well as our county. That's all I have to add.
Commissioner Ryan?
Um, I did attend the, um, Franklin County Health Department Board Meeting last week. And we, we have these board meetings every quarter or whenever, um, that's necessary. So that was a good meeting. And I also attended the Cultivate, um, twenty twenty-four that was held at Lewisburg College last week. Um, and it was done by the, um, Council of Governments, the COG did that. It was a, um, it's, I think it was from eight-thirty to one, I can't remember. But they had several different panel discussions and speakers, and, um, it talked about cultivating Franklin County. They had speakers from Franklin County talking about, especially from Franklinton. Um, they had Joe and Stephen there talking about their vision for Franklinton and what all they've done. And, and so all over the county, they had different speakers for, about different things going on in Franklin County. That was a very good, um, um, Cultivate twenty twenty-four done by the COG. It was very good, so, and very interesting. So I'm glad I attended that. I'm glad they put that on.
Does that include your report? Okay. Commissioner Pierce?
No comments tonight.
Commissioner Speed?
Yes, I would also like to. Yeah, I can serve. I had another place. Name was Scott E. Today, I had provided sound. Nine, seven. I have to cut up and add some conversation.
Does that include your report? Okay, Commissioner Schreiber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I also, um, echo the condolences for, uh, Ray. I think the biggest thing I remember about him is just had a real hummus. And when you could see him, he was always inviting, always engaging. I need to go a little bit slower. That's all, he was always a definitely going to be missed. I mean, I did also have the opportunity to go to, um, our parks board meeting, um, in Henderson. Randy is new director, as you all heard tonight. Uh, he brings a lot of years of experience in transportation. And he has really brought innovation, um, managed, good management, just, uh, processes for parks. He certainly has the experience to kind of give parks the push that it maybe need to be a little bit more focused on. It's amazing here, the folks that are there at four o'clock in the morning to drop me in there at four o'clock in the morning, drive a van, go wherever. That's, that's commitment. God bless them. That's just, that's incredible. So, um, it is a great service, and it's a much-needed service. Um, I'm glad that we have it in the county. We're roughly right at nineteen point seven percent of, of the rides are in Franklin County. It's, uh, good for me to see that we're a contributor of a fourth of the money they generate in that area, so I thought it was helpful. So I'm just, um, very happy to hear the good news.
Ms. Kim Dunn?
Thank you, Chairman Foy. I want to say thank you to the board and to the staff, um, for all of the. I want to say thank you to the board and to the staff for all of the projects that we've been able to move forward with tonight. These projects have been in the works. Epsom Park and our road project at Triangle North Franklin have certainly been in the works for a while, and these are significant projects for the county. So I appreciate that, and bringing clarity to some of the other things we have going on will certainly be helpful. And again, also appreciate having the parts presentation, because parts do a whole lot to our seniors here. Again, thank you to the board, and thank you to the staff who've worked hard to bring these matters forward.
Thank you. All right. I guess that leaves me. I just make honorable mention, I was last Wednesday during the September 11th ceremony, as I was in New York City. I didn't quite get to sit where I wanted to sit at. Security was very, very tight up there with all the high-ranking people that were on the front row seats. But I did my due diligence trying to get up there with them without being suspended or whatever. But anyway, I was there. I look forward to this recess on this radio system, re-meeting on it here at our next commissioner meeting. I just want to make sure we get that right. I don't want to be like some of our prior history, you know, being in a dilemma about how things worked out, and we should have done this. Hopefully, next two weeks, we'll, we'll get all good on this and get moving forward with this. I want to make sure it's right, and we don't have regrets years to come. I just wanted it to work out good. Like to make a note that we did get the pool table situation worked out in the aging department, going along real good. Yeah, we got an extra pool table in there. I think everybody's doing real well with that. Job well done on that. And I would like to echo my condolences to Mr. Patterson and all his family, his service to the county, and his misfortune there about moving on. And one other thing I like to bring up is, I used to be on that carts board for a few years, and I noticed one thing that always stuck in my mind when we get down to pay, was they were always on a very low end. I mean, 11, $12 per hour, and that right now. That is, hopefully, and I always got told, oh, they're retired, so they don't really matter. And I said, what's that got to do with anything, being retired? You still need getting paid worthwhile of what you work, especially with the way things cost now. Gas, electric, especially rent, if you have to rent. Horrations on rental rates, stuff like that. Anyway, hopefully, that'll come up good, or hopefully, that's being rectified and adjusted upwards as well, we pay those car drivers. Because anybody that drives those vehicles, like school buses, they deserve every penny they get, and a lot more. Lot of stress and everything else. And that concludes my report. I, any other commissioner has any other business? Please speak up.
I don't have any other business, Chairman Foy, but I just wanted to say that my church collected school supplies, and I was able to take them today on my lunch break to Lewisburg Elementary and Terrell Lane Middle School.
Well, good.
And I forgot to mention that earlier.
Well, thank you very much. Efforts.
And Principal Gilmore and Davis were very excited to receive them.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Here are motion, how about a second? All right. Been a motion made, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.